This special meeting of the Waco ISD School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law, and I just want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to the reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And I just want to ask if you would just turn off your phones to silent if you have not already done so. Really just appreciate the time that you've taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD.
Este junta regular del Waco ISD esta convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos o quien están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página puede escoger su idioma, en así toda la información que fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor, de apagar su teléfono segular y les agradecimos el tiempo que compartí con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD.
Okay, do we have anyone signed up for comment? No one signed up for comment? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3. The resignation of trustee Emily Iazetti. We have to vote on this? Hmm. Okay, so, okay, so Ms. Iazetti, trustee Iazetti, had given us a letter, I believe it was Monday, for resignation, so we have to approve that letter of resignation. Yeah, her husband is being relocated because of his job, and so obviously it makes sense for her and her family to also relocate, but we are just so thankful for your service, so thankful for the thought that you have put into your work here as a board member. Maybe we'll take a vote to approve, so entertain a motion to approve the resignation of Emily Iazetti.
Make a motion to approve the resignation of trustee Emily Iazetti.
Okay, it was, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. All in favor?
Can I, can I vote? Do I vote? Or do I have to abstain?
You can abstain.
Oh, I'll abstain.
Since you're resigning. Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, so it passes unanimously with trustee Iazetti abstaining. Emily, I just am so thankful for you. I have told Dr. King Cannon, you were the A-plus student in your class, even on this evaluation, you caught stuff that I thought, oh my gosh, I've never seen this. So, just your thoroughness, attention to detail, and willingness to ask hard questions and questions, so I'm just, I'm so incredibly thankful for you, and not that I don't appreciate each one of these gentlemen here, but I do appreciate having another lady on this board. So, thank you so much for your service. Okay, does anyone else want to say anything?
No. Oh, we don't have to do this. We don't have to.
She doesn't like the attention on herself. Okay, okay, so we are going to, based off that, could you kind of give us kind of a rundown of the options that we have as a board in terms of appointment, election? Yes, Ms. Cox?
Thank you so much, President Cordway. Good evening, trustees, and I echo your sentiments on trustee Iazetti, and there will be time where we will celebrate you. It just doesn't have to be tonight, we'll keep it to the business. So, based on your acceptance of trustee Iazetti's resignation, it is now time for the Board to discuss and take action to fill the vacancy that has been created by the acceptance of that resignation. Keep in, keep in mind that because there is more than one year remaining in the term of the position vacated, her term actually expires in May of 2025. State law requires the remaining board members to either fill the vacancy by appointment or call for a special election so that the vacancy is filled not later than 180 days after the vacancy occurs. This is outlined in state law, but also our board policy, BBC Legal. Over the last decade, both methods, appointment and a special election, have been used to fill a board vacancy in Waco ISD, with the most recent vacancy being filled in August 2021 by appointment. At that time, however, the Board chose the appointment method because regardless of which method they went with, the appointment process or the special election, the term for District 5 at that time required that the position would appear on the next May ballot, May 20 of '22. Given that Mrs. Iazetti's current term ends over a year from the date of the anticipated vacancy, the Board may decide to fill the vacancy by calling a special election for May 6 of 2023 to allow voters the opportunity to more directly select who represents them. The Board has called a general election for this May, and adding a special election is not anticipated to increase the cost for District 5. The general election we've already called does have an at-large position on it, so our partnership with McLennan County isn't adjusted in a great way by calling a special election. To hold a special election in May 2023, state law requires the Board to order the election as soon as practicable after the vacancy occurs. I have to look at that word to make sure I said it right. Should trustees approve as a part of this meeting to fill the vacancy by holding a special election, I did want to go ahead and lay out some of the dates that would be involved in that. The appointment process would be a date that we would outline at a later time for you if you chose that, but for the special election to fill a vacancy if you were to call it tonight, and it would be held in conjunction with the regularly scheduled board election on May 6, 2023, filing to run as a candidate in that special election for District 5 would open tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. and close on Monday, March 6 at 5:00 p.m. Those are some key dates. We have, we'll have a packet posted this evening if you advance with a special election, so that additional key dates would be available in a candidate packet for anyone that would be interested in that, and that would be available on www.wacoisd.org/elections. Can I try to answer any other questions?
Yeah, are there any other questions?
I have a question. So, if we did the appointment, then the timeframe for that appointment would be, they wouldn't have to run until the following May, correct?
Yes, it would be for May of 2025.
Okay.
Or 20, 2024, excuse me.
2024, okay.
Would you do an election this May or would it still be another election in 2024?
That would be based on our board elections. Are you, are you talking about for the District 5 place or a general election?
District 5. You'd have a general election.
The, the appointment would, the appointment would be to, to...
So, we do have posted on Item 5, set trustee's special election for District 5, Place 5, Saturday, March the 6th.
May 6.
Not March, May 6, thank you. And approve the amended order of election. What we could do is go through, vote on Item Number 5. If it passes, the election is set. If it doesn't pass, then we talk about an appointment. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Should we move on? Okay, great.
Can I, can I vote on this or do I abstain?
It's the remaining board members.
So, I don't?
Yes, so it would be a motion, so yeah, I'll just entertain a motion for the special election for District 5, Place 5, Saturday, May 6, 2023, and approve the amended order of election.
Make a motion that we set the special election and approve the amended order of election as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. I have a second. I'll go ahead and take a, is there any discussion?
Quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Did you ask if you are allowed to vote?
Mm-hmm.
If you're not.
Right.
Are there any things that could now and...
Oh, just on this?
Right.
So, the way that Ms. Cox has figured, has set aside is that my resignation is not effective until May 6, so I will continue to serve in a full capacity until that time, except on items directly relating to this election and this position.
Great question. Are there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we did have on Item 7, sorry, next item included on our agenda is safety and security. There was an error where the item was listed on the agenda. Do you want to apologize for that? But Dr. King Cannon, I know that you did have some new safety and security measures the district has been discussing with the secondary staff, the students and the parents, so would love if you could give a report on that.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure that everyone has the information. I think you do, but want to go over it quickly and see if you have any questions this evening. We did announce to parents the addition of additional safety measures at our secondary campuses, including the clear backpacks, starting at Waco High School next Tuesday after our President's Day break, and then on March 13 for all of our secondary campuses, the rest of the secondary campuses, including Lamb. And so, we're asking students to carry items in a clear backpack, and, and we have been, we have purchased some to pass out to students who do not have the ability to get one, and then we've had some donors, and I'd like to thank Jeremy Davis for assisting us with that, and Mrs. Cordawig. Family of Faith Worship Center is donating 1,008 backpacks. They'll be bringing those over to Waco High School in the morning. Communities in Schools is donating 1,000 backpacks, they'll be there as well, and the NAACP is donating 100 backpacks, and they'll be at Waco High School at 10:00 in the morning where Principal McGruder will have a, an assembly with the juniors and seniors, and they'll begin to pass out backpacks at lunch tomorrow. So, we invite you all to come for that presentation of backpacks, if you'd like to, to participate in that photo op in the morning, and thank those donors for the work to make that happen so quickly for our students. We're also going to implement metal detectors, and we have ordered some traditional metal detectors. However, we've also been exploring other options such as artificial intelligence. We sent a group to Aldine last Friday from Waco High School and University High School with some district leaders included, some teachers, campus administrators. They saw the implementation of traditional metal detectors at Aldine and really appreciated the structure that they, they saw at the campus they visited, MacArthur High School. And then we had a group today, and my phone was blowing up this morning, they went to Shoemaker High School in Colleen and looked at some artificial intelligence scanning software that's pretty robust and not as intrusive for the students, and that was well received. So, we, we will be getting a demo from the, that particular company. Colleen ISD has actually only been using it two months, so it's really new. But there, the company called Evolve, I think they're called Evolve, E-V-O-L-V, is going to loan us some equipment for trial, for, for pilot, just to see how that works out, and so we're excited about that. And so, if that's the option that we choose, obviously we'd bring, we would need to bring that to you for a budget approval, but we'd like the opportunity to try that out.
Will that be on all secondary schools or will it go high?
That will be all secondary schools, but we'll start with high schools first, and it's a lot of work. It's not just, you can't just plug and play. It's, you know, it takes staff, some organization by the staff, and so it will take some adjustment and time to work through protocols to do that, and our administrators had the opportunity to see that in action at two different campuses, and they have good systems and processes in place, and we'll have to develop ours. So, we'll go as quickly as we can, but we do need some time to, to make that run smoothly. And then, we'll be working on a stronger enforcement of student identification badges, and we want our students wearing those badges, and there's been some work done to get students to wear those, but, but our students have not had good habits around that, and we have not enforced them to the extent that we need to do so. And so, that's in progress also. Also, we're, we're installing vape detectors at University High School first, and we're going to go ahead and add the, actually, they've been installed at University High School. We were waiting on one more piece of software, some kind of connector. Yep.
Getting software systems to speak together, as my layman's terms of it, our security camera software and the software within the vape detectors, getting them to talk together and stuff like that. So, Jerry's been working diligently with the...
And that was something that University High School asked for back at the huddle sessions we had at the beginning of the school year. We did order those, they've taken some time to come in, they've taken some time to get installed, they are installed, and we'll be using those. We had planned to use them as a pilot at University High School this year to work out just the implementation of that, but we're going to go ahead and order for Waco High School. They may take some time to come in, however, the artificial intelligence scanning software will detect vapes, so it may be duplicative. Is that the right word? Duplicative. And then, finally, in our communication to parents, we reminded them that students can be searched, and that's in the Student Code of Conduct, so we just sent a reminder about that. We've done some training with all of our staff to, yesterday afternoon, as a matter of fact, just to make sure that our secondary administrators do that properly when it's done, so that students aren't targeted and there's a reasonable suspicion to do so, or it's done with a whole group and students aren't individually pulled out. And so, those are the things that we're doing, and course, you know, I mentioned at the City of Waco meeting yesterday that, you know, that, that there's no, there's really no standard across school districts, and as I've talked to school districts across the state, some are, some are implementing some of these measures and some aren't, and it really is a local decision. And I was reminded of that when I heard last week the new Chief of Security and Safety for the Texas Education Agency talk, and I specifically asked him about metal detectors, and his take was local decision, right? So, their, their new requirements are, are fairly minimal, and their, you know, their stance is, has been on the doors. That's really what they've focused on. He reminded us that no active shooter events have occurred, or the ones that have occurred have occurred because a person could get inside a door. So, we've continued to have the audit, the audits by TEA, the door audits that have happened. I haven't communicated those to you, but we had three, just three recently, passed, passed all three of those, and so they're still sending people out to check all of the doors across the state of Texas, and we've had our, our share of those all school year. So, we've met with principals, we've talked to principals about the new safety measures. Communication has gone out to parents and families, principals are meeting with their students, and I had a superintendent student, student advisory committee meeting yesterday with 18 high school students, and they are, they are, they are, they were so great. They gave great feedback, and they are committed to doing what they need to do to ensure the safety of their fellow students, and I was just very pleased with them and their approach and thoughtfulness and all the hard questions that they asked me. They're so smart, and I enjoyed my time with them. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this evening.
I have a question.
So, AI technology, do you get a chance to see that firsthand and kind of explain what that looks like?
No, but I actually, I got, I actually saw a soft, a video demonstration from that company. We looked at that in our leadership meeting on Monday, and then I had some videos sent to me from Colleen this morning with, with students walking through and then our staff walking through. And so, Jerry Allen was keeping me kind of up to date, and it looks really, it looks really great.
And will the AI technology and the metal detectors be following us to the new campuses?
Yes, those will both be portable and able to be moved to the new schools. Yep.
Any other questions?
I will mention the AI equipment is, you know, is pretty expensive.
That was my other question.
Define pretty.
I don't know yet, I don't have an official quote, so I hate to put numbers out on the table, but it, it's, I mean, by far exceeds the cost of a, a traditional metal detector, but we do have the new safety money. We, now, we'd already applied for it, submitted our application for the, I've forgotten the official title, but it's the allocation that came from the state, $658,000, and we've got fencing and software and all kinds of things in there to increase security measures. But we also have some S.R. money, and so we're, you know, we're committed to doing this, and I think we are going to want the artificial intelligence software. I think that's going to be, you know, I think, we'll probably do a mixture because we can't afford the, the AI at every entry point that we might want to cover, but probably at the main entry points. So, we'll, we'll be studying that and prac, you know, just working our way through that.
Is there any way we can see the videos that...
Absolutely, I can send you a link to the software demo. We saw a very quick and easy video on Monday, probably less than five minutes, that clearly demonstrates different kinds of prohibited items being brought in on a person, and he walks through the equipment and shows those to you, and then I have a great video of Suzanne Hamilton walking through this morning at Shoemaker High School and seeing how that works, and I'm happy to share that with you too. Yep.
Didn't find any contraband on our staff or anything.
Well, I don't know what they put in her pocket, but it did ding.
They found something.
They were trying to demonstrate that it does work, but I couldn't tell on the video exactly what she had in her jacket, but it did, it did go off.
How long has, I guess, this system been around? Like, have we had, like, has it battle tested? Has it been through kind of an active shooter situation, or has it stopped, I guess, real world situations, not just the test? Has it been around long enough?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question in terms of this specific software. It's new, right? I don't know of any other school districts except Colleen that is, that are using it. And I, we met with a consultant who, three or four weeks ago, we had someone from True North Consulting come in and talk to us about safety, and, and his comment to me was that these systems are relatively new, and they might be too new, right? And so, it's just like any kind of software program, you may have to work some bugs out. So, I, you know, I really hesitated on that until, until we had the weapons that we had and decided to go ahead and take another look after I contacted John Kraft and Colleen to see if they were using metal detectors, and he told me that they were using this AI software. So, reports from today were really good, that it looks really good, and I think we'd like to try it, but definitely new.
I've never received as many calls and emails as I did after the most recent weapon was found on Waco High School, and I was actually surprised at the number of counselors and teachers and administrators on the Waco High Campus and then parents that called to say, "We need metal detectors and we need clear backpacks." I thought that that was going to be a harder sell than what the campus was asking for, but it was a fairly, it was a robust word from them, maybe not unanimous, but it was a very loud call, so thank you for stepping towards that. I would encourage us as we go along in that obviously safety is incredibly important and our primary issue in that, but we must at the same time be, I think, I don't remember where Keith, now we're talking about it, but he mentioned that the beauty of the AI is that it's less obtrusive, it's less invasive, I think is the word, and I think that, that too is a very helpful thing for our students to not feel like they are, have burglar bars on their windows, and so, yeah, it, thank you for taking those steps. I know that, that actually, Mr. Freeman reached out to me today and said, "Just that word has lowered the anxiety on the campus quite a bit," and they've had only one fight this week, which is about a third of what they normally have each day, and so I'm grateful.
You remind me that we, you know, we, these are, these are some preventative measures, but, but we still have to know the kids, right? And we still have to implement them with fidelity, so just having metal detectors or artificial intelligence software or the Stop It app, you know, everything has to work together, and what I told the Waco High School teachers is they have to work together as a team, and if they say they want students to wear identification badges and they don't enforce it, then it won't happen. And so, it really is only as good as we work together to make it happen in the systems and processes that we put in place, and also, we still have to know our kids, and the adults still have to have those relationships with kids, and they still have to see what's happening with students to be able to catch a lot of things, so we can't relax in that regard.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate how quickly the community responded to the clear backpack mandate. Communities in Schools, Erin Myers, Pastor Ruben Andrade from Family of Faith, and Peaches Henry, Dr. Peaches Henry with the NAACP, all answered the call as soon as we reached out to them, so I appreciate that. I don't think the community was surprised, I, I'm not surprised by the community's support of these measures, because I think these are measures that the community has wanted for a while. I do think that it was alarming to see multiple students be caught on Waco High's campus, but we've seen kind of our behavior issues going in this direction for a while, so I wasn't surprised when our community supported, but I will say thank you so much for supporting and always being there for our children.
I want to add that, you know, this has primarily been a secondary school issue. I was on all the elementary schools last week delivering king cakes to counselors and had conversations at two different schools, and after seeing principals and counselors know every child's name, which was, as you mentioned, the key to all of it, but, but with them, them welled up, you know, after this six, six-year-old student shot their teacher after having a gun, this isn't just a secondary school issue anymore, and which is disturbing and frightening and, and something that certainly on the minds of our, our teachers and educators now going forward is that the, the more you see this in elementary school campuses as well, as tragic it is, it's something that, that we need to care for those educators as well in a preemptive way as best we can, as, you know, so.
Thank you.
No, just thankful to see everyone on the Board on the same accord on this issue, so appreciate y'all.
One, one last comment about this. I want to say that I have expressed to the Board my thoughts on metal detectors and not being the biggest fan of them in our district, but I will say that there's plenty of instances that our students frequent that they have to go through metal detectors. If they go to Baylor games, if they go to the airport, there's many areas that because of safety measures that have to be taken, they have to go through these metal detectors. So, I think that of course in a perfect world, we would not need them, but I do think with what we've seen happen over the last, I would say, two years in and out of the district, we have to, have to do what we have to do to keep our kids safe, so I'm happy to see these measures are being taken.
I am really...
I am really thankful, you know, when we had discussed this, Dr. Kinkanen and I, I turned to, I think, I know Jeremy Davis was giving thanks for CIS and Family Faith and the NAACP, but it really was his effort in calling people. And I sent a text message to the board and said, "Jeremy Davis is on fire." I mean, he is, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen the community just, I mean, literally, he was like, "Okay, I talked to this person, they're doing this. I talked to this person, they're doing this." And just, I want to echo his sentiments, the community. I had a couple of calls today and it was like within hours. They were like, "Absolutely, we're going to do whatever, whatever we can to support these kids." And that is what I have seen typically from this community is their generosity towards our kids and their care and concern always for our kids. And I'm just so, so thankful. I'm also very thankful, Kinkanen, because I know that the TEA, the new safety guide didn't necessarily have a standard or guidance, really. And I think, when I think back to your leadership over these past couple of years, you've kind of had to be at the forefront of a lot of things and making decisions on behalf of our students when I think of the mask mandate and, or just these different things and decisions that your administration, along with your team, thoughtfully and carefully implemented. And so, I agree with trustee Gilleri. I am so thankful. Everyone is on the same page, looking forward. And I just want to thank you for being at the forefront, for making calls all throughout the state of Texas, figuring out what other people are doing. And I think not responding, responding in a way that's very intentional, knowing that we're about to probably spend a significant portion of money in how to, willing to do that and how to best utilize that and implement that. I think that is what I have seen throughout your tenure here at Waco ISD. I've seen very thoughtful consideration, looking at our district specifically and saying, "Okay, what is best for our students, for our families?" And so, I just, I really want to thank you for being on the cutting edge of safety.
Thank you for that. And I want to, I looked over and saw Chief Williams. I want to thank Chief Williams for his work. He did visit Shoemaker High School today. So he was there as part of that team. Appreciate you going.
Practical question. It sounds like we have just over 2,100 backpacks that have been donated. How many total students do we have in those secondary campuses that will need backpacks, whether we're short or we need to tell a certain number to purchase? Do you know that number?
Great question.
Off the top of my head, I would estimate probably close to 6,000 because I understand that Indians Spring Carver already have clear backpacks. So probably, that's, that's just off the top of my head. The district has ordered 2,500 backpacks and so that.
In addition to the 21?
In addition to the 2,100, so.
High schools should be covered.
High schools will be covered and that's assuming that no student brings their own. And then today, I thought, this afternoon, I thought I'd like to ask the foundation, Educational Foundation to help us as well. And so, I'll be making that request.
So, Kinkanen, Dr. Kinkanen, the rollout for the clear backpacks for high school students will happen after President's Day, February 21st.
Waco High School next week and then every other secondary campus on March 13th.
Okay, so after spring break.
Mm-hmm, after spring break. Waco High School, you know, we knew we needed some time to, for kids to order backpacks, for us to order backpacks, for kids to adjust to the idea of having a different backpack. And we heard that from the kids yesterday, like, "I have my cool backpack that I bought that I spent a lot of money on and I really like it." And so, we knew that would take some time. Waco High School teachers, when we asked them what they would like, someone suggested February 21st. And so, that's kind of where we landed.
Do we know a unit cost? So 6,000 totals what we need and we have maybe 4,600 of those accounted for? Or it's an additional 6,000 that we need?
We have 4,600 accounted for.
Out of 6,000?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And do we know a unit cost of what we spent on those?
Cheryl is not in here. I asked her the unit cost this afternoon. She didn't know it off the top of her head. She knew that she had, we had spent 26,000 from one order and I didn't quite catch the number from the other, but she ordered two different kinds of backpacks. One's a little bit heavier and bigger and they only had 1,800. And then the other set is a little bit smaller, maybe not quite S sturdy. And that's the remainder that she ordered. But she tried to get as many of the heavier, duty-er ones that she could get. But I can get that information to you. And there, you know, you can find them on Amazon for $20, $20. You may even be able to get them cheaper than that. But I know we were, you know, hoping to get something fairly sturdy, especially for secondary kids who are, they're carrying a lot of stuff in their backpacks. But I can get that cost for you if you're interested in it.
I think it might just be helpful if we reach out to either local foundations or other organizations and say, "We're 2,000 short. That's 20 grand or 10 grand," or have a number to give them and say, "This is our goal. Help us get there."
Sure. And I don't know what the others costs that are being donated. Did you have something to add, Elizabeth?
Let me double check the vendors that Cheryl and our amazing purchasing team, they took in samples over the week and placed that order today because they wanted to touch, feel, look at the size and shape of everyone. And so, let me get with their vendors and things like that. Because I know she, the reason why we have the two different kinds coming was because we couldn't get 2,500 of the one kind. And so, we'll get you the options and the unit prices. And based on what she was telling us, the, we definitely get a discount in ordering more than the price you see on Amazon, but it's still well over $15 or so, I think, per bag.
Great questions. Kinkanen, I am, again, thankful for all that. And as a board, I know that this is a very active board. We like to get our, roll up our sleeves and get involved. And so, we will keep you, we'll give you the videos of what our administrators have seen today. So we've got some of those. And then you can see Suzanne Hamilton get dinged and kind of see what that looks like. And then we will kind of keep you updated with the numbers that we have gotten in terms of donation, whether it be monetary or actual backpacks. I think, yeah, we'll get that to you and we'll keep everyone kind of aware of what is going so that we can reach out to people that we know and ask if they would be willing to. Sure. No, 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 that's great.
We'll do it with the staff that we have. And I believe in Aldine ISD, they use teachers and administrators. I think in Colleen, they use mostly teachers and administrators and maybe their SRO. Do you want to answer that, chief?
The campus, their staff, they're able to do that. And yes, we're there in the area with them. So if something is found, you know, then we can, if need be for us to prosecute someone, then we're able to prosecute them. Because with us actually doing the search, we have probable cause where the administrative staff can do it upon reasonable suspicion. You're welcome.
Thanks, chief.
Lots of good discussion. We will, are there any announcements?
Stephanie. Central National Banks donating $2,500 for the backpack.
Yes, yes, they're, yeah. It's going to be a surprise, but we, today, we made some phone calls because I thought, I haven't had a chance, I actually haven't, didn't eat breakfast and didn't eat lunch because we've been on the phone talking with people. But I thought, I have a four-year-old daughter and if I have to take something away from her, she doesn't like it. And most people don't. And I thought, these kids have gone through a lot, specifically at Waco High, for the past three years. And I thought it would be a nice gesture if, I guess I can ask the board right now, if the board would join everyone Tuesday morning to pass out $5 gift cards to Bushes for each of the kids so that we can kind of set the tone for them of, "We are so glad you're here at school and here you go, this is for you." Bushes has actually donated $2,000 towards that. We have Joe Nesbit for Central, for, no, Central National Bank has also donated. We have Antioch Community Church, which has also donated about $2,500 towards that. And, and we too can pitch in towards that, but I just thought, man, that would be just a great way to kind of set the tone. And if a kid is bringing a backpack that maybe isn't clear and not compliant, we can just say, "Hey, you know what? We've got two things for you this morning. Clear backpack inside and here's your $5 gift card." And just thought as a way to really kind of reframe potentially a hard situation. So, yeah, yeah. So Tuesday morning, I would invite the entire board to get there and let's pass out some gift cards. Any other questions? Okay, we will go into closed session. Oh, any announcements? Are there any announcements? Any, do you want me to do? Also, I wanted to give Keith an opportunity to share his, Litt Waco this past weekend. It did, it seems like it was a huge event, authors and all kinds of stuff. I saw it through Facebook, I wasn't quite, but I would love for you to kind of just share a little bit about, about that. And I know that you are deeply passionate about literacy and have an amazing testimony and just of the power of literacy. So, but I'd love for you to share a little bit about that.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared for that.
Sorry, sorry, I should have texted.
And we've been talking a lot. Now, I want to take up everyone's time, but we did bring in 17 authors from all around the world, really, and across Texas, around the country, to come in and get in front of our students, to share their stories. And also shared my story as far as being a struggling reader, growing up in inner-city Houston and going to inner-city school. And so, that allows me to really connect and understand the struggles of our students. And putting the, putting a book in a student's hands, like what my grandparents did for me when I moved in with them in high school, changed the trajectory of my life, changed my life and opened me up to different worlds and pretty much got me in the career that I'm in now. It got me here on the board, serving our community, serving our students, serving our teachers and serving with you all. And it was really surreal doing that event. It really came, like I said before, full circle in my life. Seeing it given to me and me being able to give it back was, it was huge for me and it was huge for my wife and my, and my kids were able to come in from college. My two college-aged kids came in from college, Summer was there, my fourth-grade daughter. And for them to be able to participate in that, it was, it was huge for, for me, it was huge for the community. I remember seeing a, had to be like a second grade, a third grade student come in and she walked into the author room and she was like, you know, "Wow, this is amazing." And she just really went nuts. And that, that really made it, that really made it for me and really brought it home. But seeing just the excitement and seeing students and even adults get excited about reading and writing, the authors did an amazing job. It was, it was really cool. So thank you for allowing me to share that. It was a big day.
That's awesome. You probably inspired our future authors from here in Waco and Waco ISD. So we will go into closed session. There are no further announcements. You don't need to stay around because we will take no action when we come back from closed session.